She's going to be attending virtually. Hopefully. You will see her anywhere?
I don't know if you remember down there.
Morning!
Good morning, everyone. Welcome. First of all, we'll call the county board meeting to order. This is a pretty momentous day. This is the first time any of us have ever been in a room dedicated to the county board and the function that we serve. Our historian Trent Minor told me that prior to Branch Three, being established as a courtroom, that was the county board room dedicated as such, but that's forty years ago. So, none of us have had this opportunity, and it is a really nice setup. Now, there's a few things Trent wants to remind you before we get rolling here with the whole meeting.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. There's an old saying that is given to Alice Roosevelt, who is a daughter of Ted Roosevelt, and she used to say, "If you don't have something nice to say, come sit next to me." She did not mean that in this county board room. The reason I say that is because these mics are live. As soon as you can click the table, the little collar's going to go on. I mean, we hear everything. So, if you can't say it to your mama, and you can't say it to the person, best not say it at all. We learned that when we were kids. So, I'm sure everybody will be fine. It's been really silent. You guys are really silent today, so I'm impressed. Also, you can hear us in the background. The microphones in front of you also have a speaker, so you're probably hearing me through your speaker in front of you as well. So, there should be no reason not to hear stuff if it's pretty mic'd up. So, just FYI. And we're still working. Katie's here with me today to try to figure. We're still working through the audiovisual stuff through the conferencing, so bear with us. It might be a little hiccup-y on our way through.
Pretty high-tech. We haven't had a chance to practice or run through this. Trent also told me that not only do these microphones pick up everything as well as the ceiling mics, they also pick up what you're thinking. So...
I only know a mill, and it hit me twice already, so I'm sorry.
Especially designed for some of you on that side of the room.
If you need scratch paper for writing most to each other, I have that, but remember, that's probably an open record then.
All right. Clerk to take the role. I assume he has nothing ready? And then I would please ask the body to rise up in the location of the Pledge of Allegiance as our Chaplain, Supervisor Joe Surt, who goes to the podium.
If you wish to join, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, as we gather together today, we ask for your Spirit of Unity to be present among us. Help us to put aside any personal agendas or differences and work together in harmony towards our common goal. Remind us of the words in Psalm 133, "Behold how good and pleasant it is when brethren dwell as one." Let this be our desire as we engage in discussions and make decisions that impact our county residents. We trust that with your guidance and grace, we can achieve a sense of unity and work together effectively. May our words be filled with concern and respect for one another, and may our actions reflect the unity we strive for. Finally, Father, please protect our sons and daughters serving in our armed forces, especially those overseas, and bring them safely home to their loved ones. Also, we pray for our police, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel. Keep them safe as they protect and serve us. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Please join the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think they got this right. Thank you, everybody reading clearly. I gotta be loud here. I think the sound is too exceptional in the room. Everybody having a real easy time hearing everything that's going on? You need a louder? No, you're good. Okay. All right. First order of business is to dispense with the approval of the minutes from the previous session. I have a motion by Hamilton to approve. I have a second by Latham. There is discussion on those minutes from the previous session. All in favor of approval, please signify by aye. And opposed, and that motion carries. We have no resignations today, and under appointments, we have one, and that is appointments to the Board of Adjustment for a term ending July 1st of 2027, and the person selected is Denise Sonnen, and I would also entertain a motion to that effect by Rosar. Second by Schultz. Did you have your hand up over there, Wayne? Okay, by Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you. We have some people here today that I assume aren't here for public comment. I'm going to get to that in just one second. Well, before I do that, we have a brand-new criminal justice coordinator onboard. We had some really qualified candidates that applied for this position. We had one who really stood out. I know the Human Services Department wasn't probably real happy that we stole him, but Dylan Dushanik, Dylan's in the back. Dylan, stand up a second so they know we are. Dylan is going to be our Criminal Justice Coordinator. He'll be running amongst other things the Drug Port Program. That's one of the things that they're doing. Dylan, welcome. I want you to be able to see who's here and have them recognize you. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. And then we will go to public comment. If you have public comment today, I'd ask that you please approach your microphone, state your name, move forward. Any other, and you have three minutes. That will be up on the board. Do you have any public comment today? Yes, please.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Jeski. I am the District Administrator for the School District of Auburndale. I am here, I guess, to bring attention to a matter which I think has received plenty of attention recently, specifically the intersection of Highway 10 and 186 that's just to the south and west of Auburndale. I have a letter here which I have written to the DOT. I've shared it with Sheriff Becker and Bill Voight on the board. I've been asked to read that letter, and I will do so with your permission. I write this letter on behalf of the School District of Auburndale, the Board of Education, the community, employees, and students in hopes that you will hear our cries for action regarding the intersections of State Highways 186 and 10. Auburndale is a village of approximately 800 citizens, but is a suburb of our very rural community. It is the location of our elementary and secondary schools, and on most weekdays from September to June, the location of over 840 students and an additional 110 employees. As mentioned, we are a village. Each building in our village has its own well. We have no stoplights within our entire district, no local law enforcement outside of the Wood County Sheriff's Department, and a single gas station located on the west side of our village. We are the picture of rural America. Fifteen years ago, Highway 10 was built to allow traffic to move around Auburndale at a faster and more efficient pace on the south side of our village. While we welcomed the break from the busy Highway 10 traffic that traveled down our Main Street, we were concerned with the cross-traffic that must cross the posted 65 mile-per-hour highway. We have three paved roads that intersect Highway 10 from the south. County Road K to the east of the village, Highway 186, which turns in the old Highway 10 once the four lanes are crossed on Highway 10, and County Road E to the west of the village. Highway 186 is the busiest road for local traffic and those who travel from Harbin, Vespur, or Wisconsin Rapids north to Marshfield and beyond. Accidents happen on roadways and intersections at various times and seasons when it involves moving vehicles. We understand that. It's an expectation. Our concern is the fact that most of the accidents at Highways 186 and 10 involve younger inexperienced drivers who may or may not be familiar with the speeds of traffic on Highway 10 or the stop sign that separates the east and westbound lanes. With witness to pain in the community and our families when young lives are involved in tragic deadly accidents at this intersection, is our intention to bring these facts to light with the hope that the Department of Transportation would acknowledge our concerns and work with us to address this intersection. I feel very confident that we can work with our parents, students, community, and staff for getting the safest way into and out of school each day. At this point in time, it involves one of the three roads mentioned in the previous paragraph. Each of the intersection requires a stop before crossing the eastbound and another stop before crossing the westbound lane. I'm not asking the DOT to address each of the intersections. Rather, I am asking to fix the busiest, most dangerous crossing point, Highway 186. If we have a road that will allow all to cross over or under or somehow navigate Highway 10, we can educate, encourage, and support our students, parents, staff, and community to use that road to travel safely to and from school. In education, we are constantly told to use data and research to make sound decisions and choices. I looked at the map of Wisconsin, specifically Highway 10 that moves from two lanes to four lanes beginning in Marshville, Wisconsin. It stretches through the center of the state, ending in the Fox Valley transportation network of highways, high passes, and interstates. I have looked at the intersections of all the state highways that intersect the four-lane Highway 10. I'm going to say that sentence again. I have looked at all the intersections of all the state highways that intersect the four-lane Highway 10 without exception. They all have an overpass, underpass, and a ramp to move onto, off, over, or under Highway 10. Highway 186 is the only state highway that intersects another state highway that is four lanes wide, that does not have the same safety structure, convenience, or concern in an intersection. I believe the number of accidents at that intersection support providing the same consideration to this matter as the other state highway intersections are giving on Highway 10. Highway 10 and 186 intersection is less than 10 minutes from the Marshfield Business Park Hospital, and the businesses, the majority of our community workforce. On weekdays, it is busy westbound in the morning and eastbound in the afternoon. It is the only state highway that directly connects to Fox Valley to Marshville. We are asking for help from our residents and those in surrounding communities who must cross to travel through this intersection, whether it be jogulated, weekend excursions, or traveling to school. We want the Department of Transportation to consider creating a crossing that meets the same safety criteria as all the other state highways that intersect Highway 10. Something needs to be changed, but we will continue to witness, react, and mourn the loss of others as they travel through this dangerous intersection. This is signed by me and my five-member Board of Education from the School District of Auburndale. I know I've lost all of my time. I thank you, and I also want to acknowledge the Wood County Sheriff's Department. In the last month, as I get on Highway 10 and travel to Marshville and come back, there's constant squads that are sitting watching those intersections. But as my dad used to say, you think you've got a really good dam built to block off water, and you look down one day and you see the spot, and you just stand there long enough, pretty soon it starts to spring a leak, so you put your finger in one hole, and pretty soon another hole pops and so on. What they're doing now is abandoning. Doesn't fix it, because over time, this will wear off. Doesn't change the intersection. Doesn't change what's going to happen, or has happened. Structurally, something needs to change at that intersection, and again, I'm asking the Board to support that.
Thank you, Mr. Jeski. I know the Board, we have a three-minute rule. I've obviously allowed that to occur. It's important information, and I need you to come forward with the support. So, I thank you for the input and the presentation. I know there's other people who may have said the same thing, but I knew this was organized and very well set. Thank you so much. Do we have other further comment? Now, with the other further comments, because that kind of sums up, we will adhere to the three-minute rule, but please come forward. State your name.
Hello. My name is Wendy Ben Dixon, and I'm a resident of Vespur. Picture behind me is my granddaughter, and I'm going to read a letter that my daughter wrote. It says, "My name is Ashley Turner. I live in Auburndale about a quarter mile from Highway 10 and 186 intersection. If I look out my front windows, I can see the intersection. It used to be something I would look at daily without it piquing my stomach. That all changed Friday, December 13, 2024 at 5:40 PM. It was that dreadful night that my family's lives got turned upside down. My mom's sisters and I have a Facebook Messenger group chat. We talk on it daily about everything. Little did we know, when my mom sent a message that Friday night about an accident at Highway 10 and 186, it was my niece Casey Rampin. Shortly after the accident occurred, I, my sister Amanda, called me in a panic that Casey was in the area and she could not get a hold of her. I immediately jumped in the car, and my husband drove us to the intersection. I ran to the vehicle, and my heart dropped as I saw my niece in the passenger seat, unresponsive. I am a registered nurse, starting my nursing career in the operating room, and basic life support and advanced cardiac life support certified. Prior to becoming a registered nurse, I spent the past 16 years as a CNA. I have seen my fair share of traumas and death. I have performed CPR on patients more times than I can count. What I have never had to do until that night was perform CPR on a family member. My husband and I were the first ones on the scene. I remember a Wood County officer being there and one other person. I identified myself to the officer and told him that Casey was my niece. With all my training, I knew the exact steps to take to save her. We worked to extract her from the car, and I performed CPR until Marshall DMS pronounced her dead. Once she was pronounced, I covered her with a blanket, and I slowly stood up in disbelief as everything I was taught and trained for did not save her. I told my husband to call my sister Mandy, Casey's mom, and my parents. They arrived shortly after the call to the scene. As I stood near my niece's new lifeless body, my son-in-law chatted. Casey's dad yelled, "Where's my little girl?" As my voice shook, and I choked back tears, I responded with, "I tried." At the same time, my sister had collapsed into my husband's arms, and she yelled, "You have to save her. You have to." As the tears came, all I could say is I did everything I could. I tried to save her. My husband and I were the ones to notify my sister and brother-in-law that their daughter was dead. I had to confirm to my parents that their granddaughter was dead and identify the body for the Wood County Sheriff, and then had to go home and tell my children that Casey had died. I took the week following her death off after telling my manager that I cannot safely work with patients. Since that day, I rarely sleep. Every time I close my eyes, I see Casey from that night. I question my abilities as a nurse daily, and maybe I did something different. I could have saved her. The medical part of me knows the traumatic injuries she received, but the act part of me questions everything I did that night. I question if I should be a nurse anymore, and I question the career that I worked so hard for. I question the abilities of our state and our county, and I question everything. There are many details of that night that I have not told anybody about. While I would like to tell everyone in this room so that you get just a glimpse of what I went through, it will not change the fact that she was killed due to poor highway design, no follow-ups with numerous accidents, and senseless deaths. I am asking all of you in this room to please help Casey's family make a change so no other family has to experience this again. How many more innocent lives need to be taken before someone steps in? Is it going to take one of your loved ones to experience the same tragedy before the state and county decides enough is enough? Everyone always says that something like this won't happen to them, so they won't worry about the change until it happens to them. I will leave you all with a few questions to think about as you leave this room. How many of you know someone, or has a family member, or you yourself is a first responder, firefighter, or a nurse? How would you feel if you were to be the first on the scene of a loved one's fatal accident? How would you all feel if it was your loved one in that accident that could have been prevented if the road was constructed the way it wasn't constructed the way it was? Highway 10 and 186 need to be an overpass. Many of the crossroads should not have intersections. The signs that line Highway 10 obstruct the driver's line of sight while in the middle intersection, any of the roads that cross Highway 10, and you have to pull out into the road to see if there is uncoming traffic. Next time you give me a vehicle, think of Casey, Ashley Turner, and of Casey Rampin. I just want to include with Mr. Jeski's that 14 buses have to cross, or the buses need to cross that highway 14 times a day. So, that's 14 times a day that children are at risk of having the same thing happen to them that happened to us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have to show compassion in our actions, and I know we have a three-minute time limit on public comment, but this is one of those where we can't automatically express our condolences, and so I certainly allowed that to finish because, like I said, the human component comes into all this, and again, our condolences. Additional public comment?
My name is Mike Sable. I'm a school board member of Auburndale, and I'll keep within the three minutes. Number one, yes, we as a board are very concerned, and so that's why, yes, we with our superintendent, instructor, the letter, and such. Number two, I've been a member of Wood County and the Auburndale community since I moved here in 1981 and have been involved deeply in both civic items and agricultural items. I know a number of you. You know a number of me and such. When this last accident happened, I have been hearing over the years from all sorts of groups, and I'll name a few of them, that something needs to be done, not only with 186, but possibly with some of our other county trunks and town roads that intersect with Highway 10. So, I took it upon myself, because different people talk with me, and so, yes, I am organizing a meeting. It is going to be a select meeting to get officials from different governmental organizations there to talk about items and to see if this group that's going to be made up of town officials, school board, the busing company, the Auburndale Fire, and EMTs, et cetera, can come to do whatever we can to back your resolution that's going to the DOT that some things can be done. And so, I wanted to inform you of that. Supervisor Bill Voight is going to be there, and like I said, I'm going to invite a couple officials from all these different governmental agencies to try to work with you. Sheriff Becker, I've talked with him. He's onboard and such. We need to go and do something. 186 is the primary, but I think there can be safe items in other places, too. So, with that, thank you very much for your consideration, and yes, we're hoping to come up with something that can help you to convince DOT we've got it or something.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? You know, in regard to the public comment, I just wanted for people to know who have spoken today that some of those actions have already begun. Those conversations have started. Some of us have had conversation directly with the Department of Transportation. So, thank you. No other public comment on any issue? All right, then we will move forward. We have no acknowledgements and recognitions today, which will get us directly into the packet. Under referral, we have one from Jackson County and eight of the municipalities within that county in regard to the elk herd and some of the damage that may cause there that was forwarded to the appropriate committees. All right, as we move forward into the committee meetings, Tuesday, December 17th, the Operations Committee. Page 10. Pages 11 and 12, Operations Committee of January 7th. And then we have the monthly letter of comments from the Office of the County Clerk, Trent Minor, and that's on 13 and 14. Update from the Human Resources Department begins on 15, runs through page 20, 15 to 20. Office of the Treasurer on 21. Employment Wellness on 22. We have a monthly update from the Health Department begins on Highway, or Highway begins on page. Have a House on Highway 23, but this is actually page 23, runs through page 27, pages 23 through 27. We have the minutes of the Public Safety Committee beginning on 28, runs through 29, 28 to 29. And then we have the Wood County Traffic Safety Commission meeting on 30 and 31. We have the monthly report from the Sheriff's Department, begins on page 32 and runs through page 57, 32 to 57. And then that brings us to the first resolution in the packet, and I'd ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 25-1-1, to recommend the Department of Transportation to improve safety measures at the intersection of US Highway 10 and State Highway 186 to include, but not limited to, an overpass. Fiscal note, none.
A motion by Butke. I have a second by Bry. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Supervisor Voight first.
Someone put my name on Facebook up at Auburndale, and my phone rang Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I was very courteous to talk to the people who called. They were very concerned about the intersection. I assured them that we were having a resolution come before us today, and we were going to take action on it and refer it to the DOT. You heard Mr. Jeski? The people up there are upset, and they want something done.
Supervisor Bry?
Yes, I can testify to the fact, too, that's a bad intersection. I take 186 back from Rapids sometimes after the county board, and intersection kind of sneaks up on you. There's a little bit of a crest in the hill there, and you go on, you know, you're going 55, 60 miles an hour, and you can see those stops sitting on the opposite side. But from one on the south side, it kind of sneaks up on you. And I had to hit the brakes harder than normal usually. And the other thing, too, is when you're coming on 10, heading east, that turnout, I don't believe was long enough, plus the DOT shortened the distance between the highway and the stop ahead or the highway sign. I know some probably 10, 12 years ago. Why they did it, I don't know, because people drive fast all the time, and you got to hit your brakes to get on to there. I used to always coast up the intersection, conscious of gas mileage, but they did some dumb things back then. I fucked them pretty hard in my tone because of some of those intersections. Highway E, they didn't do anything with that until shortly before the highway was moved, and they finally did talk them into putting stoplights every last year, I guess. There were some fatalities there. And they finally put the stoplights. They wanted to rip them all a year later when they moved the highway, so... But now, E is handled. But 186 is dead. I'll testify to that. Thank you.
Further discussion? Further discussion? All right, I'd ask you to please vote.
Question, Valen Stein? Did I hear a yes, Laura?
You did, yes.
Thank you. And that resolution passed unanimously. That will be forwarded to all the appropriate peoples, most of which were mentioned today.
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order.
Supervisor Clennett?
What a point of order this is. We usually stand when we approach and talk. Does that change because we're in this room?
No, that's a good point, and we will... Moving forward, if you're going to speak, we ask you to please write. That's a good point, though. So, we're getting used to this new room. I got to look around, see where everything is, but Dad, you are absolutely right. All right. Mark that down. Supervisor Clennett has been right once already this year. We're only in January. All right. Moving forward, pages 59, 60, and 61 are minutes of the seed meeting from January 8th. Seed meeting from January 8th. The Golden Sands Conservation Development Council, their minutes from November. Pages 62 through 70, their minutes in various committees, 62 to 70. We have minutes of the Wood County Land Information Council on 71 and 72. We have the update from UW Extension, 73 through 77, 73 through 77. We have the monthly letter of comments from the Land and Water Conservation Department begins on 78 and runs through 83, 78 to 83. Update from Planning and Zoning, beginning with Dr. Rivers, 84 to 89, 84 to 89. Then that brings us to the next resolution in the packet, which is on 90, and there's some supporting documentation on 91.
This will be Resolution 25-1-2, approved amendment to the Town and Cameron official zoning ordinance. Fiscal note, none.
A motion by Latham, a second by Bry. Discussion? Any discussion? All right, I'd ask you to please vote.
Question, Valen Stein?
Aye.
Again, that resolution passes unanimously, 19-0. Thank you. All right, moving forward, minutes of the Judicial and Legislative Committee, their meeting from December All right, moving forward, minutes of the Judicial and Legislative Committee, their meeting from December 16th on page 92. Their meeting from December 18th on 93. The minutes from the Judicial and Legislative Committee from January 3rd on 94 and 95. Supervisor Clint, I don't know if you want to make an announcement there, but we, our very longtime Corporation Counsel is counting the days down to his retirement. We have hired a replacement. Bill, do you want to say anything there? Please stand.
Yes, I could only stand for a little while. But anyways, yes, we have had people put in for the job and we did get Nicholas Flanagan, who is, right now, he's presently serving about 22 counties in Wood County and other counties. And he will be taking hold on March 3rd of this year. And he is coming in now and sitting along beside our Corporation Counsel on going through this thing.
James, Bill, yeah, the transition has started. Maybe it depends over time with Peter O'Reilly. They're working on that transition and I'm hoping it will be as smooth as we anticipated. So, again, thank you. Thank you to the committee. I think you made a really good choice there. Moving forward in the packet, page 96, the update from the Child Support Agency. Page 97, from the Clerk of Courts, a register and probate on 98. Register of deeds on 99. And then we have minutes of the Highway Infrastructure and Recreation Committee, their minutes from December 17th on page 100. Their regular monthly meeting, Thursday, January 2nd, begins on 101 and runs through 103, 101 to 103. We have the monthly letter of comments again, and the update from the Highway Department, begins on 104 and runs through 111, 104 to 111. We have a monthly update from the Parks Department, begins on 112 and that runs through 119, 112 to 119. The resolution that you had on page 120 is being pulled from the packet. It was not signed by the committee. That issue's already been resolved and so that is a non-issue.
It was signed by the committee, so you now consent by the board to be a vote for it.
Uh oh, my copy wasn't signed by. Do we have, you guys can pull that from the packet? All right, we're good. We do have a resolution from the Highway Infrastructure Committee on page 121, and I would ask the clerk to please read that resolution.
This will be Resolution 25-1-3, to grant an increase in the Highway Commissioners' compensation from Step 7 to Step 8 effective January 1st, 2025. Fiscal note, totals $5,020.
Motion by Brine, a second by Brine. Discussion? Jake, Supervisor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The step increase before us today is both necessary and well observed. It will bring our Highway Commissioners' compensation up to an equal level with its counterparts in neighboring counties. The BERT Committee passed this unanimously. I'm in strong favor of it and I ask you to support it today. Thank you.
Further discussion? Supervisor Roser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be a no vote on this resolution and I want to explain why. When I got on this board some years ago, I voted no to hire our Veterans Officer because the process was not done the way the process was supposed to be done. You know, he's been a wonderful department head and we've actually had, we've been delighted to have him as a department head, but the process was not followed in his hire. He was actually hired before he was approved by the board and it was just one of the first votes I took that I thought that I needed to vote no on. So here we are again with another process vote and I feel strongly that this is not the way to do things. There, you all have heard me sing the praises of our department heads. I hope nobody takes this personally, but there are other ways to ensure equity, fairness throughout our department head population. And I just believe that the process was not followed in bringing this resolution forward and I will be a no vote because of that. Thank you.
Further discussion? Supervisor Clint.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm voting yes on this issue. I find certain people always don't know our races for our individuals here in the county board. And I think it's doing it and saying no just because a process was wrong. That's not what that initial here, does the person deserve it? And obviously, the committee thinks it deserves it and I would, I'm holding for it. I don't think we should vote against this because somebody thought the process was wrong. Thank you.
Further discussion? Supervisor Voight?
I have one other thing. He is so good to talk to whenever there's a problem with our roads, our highways. He's always so congenial in offering any help he can at anything. Also, another feather in his hat, I believe he is president of the Wisconsin Highway Commissioners Association.
Further discussion? Yes, Supervisor, let me go to Supervisor Brine and Butkie.
I just want to make a comment. I'm a yes, because that man over there has brought in millions of dollars for grants and this is only $5,000. Thank you.
Supervisor Butkie?
Thank you. I was going to push the button to talk.
You did.
I hate to say it, but Mr. Clint is right again, the second time now this year. But, you know, we have to keep up with the waves. You know, we have some issues in other departments where we're way behind in the private sector and we have a harder time getting people. And now this person, I heard nothing but good things about him and I agree. Let's not get caught up in something else. Let's take care of what we should take care of and I vote a yes.
I'll get you in one second, Supervisor. Any further discussion? Back to you Supervisor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to get into a debate over this, but the current process is that the Oversight Committee can increase employees staff over 6 by resolution and that's the process that was followed. So if the process not being followed, I'm not sure where that's coming from. Thank you.
Further discussion? Anybody else? Supervisor Brine?
Yes, I advocated for hiring Roland. First place, we interviewed a bunch of candidates. Roland was way over the top with anything that was to be handled by his department and I circummoved yes on this issue. Have you?
Anybody else? All right, see, no one else. I would ask you to please vote.
Mr. Chairman Allenstein?
No.
The resolution passes 17-2, 17-2. All right, moving forward in your packet, we have another resolution brought forth by the HERT Committee.
This will be Resolution 25-1-4, approval of the 2025 Wood County Forest Annual Work Plan. Fiscal note, potential loss of state aid revenues of $57,088.16.
Motion by Zerflu, a second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Any discussion? Ready, Trent?
I'm good, man.
Okay. There we go. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman Allenstein?
Yes.
Supervisor Lightner? Did I register as a yes?
Well, I didn't register at all, so that's why I called you all. I had to push the, sorry. Screen, see if it takes.
That resolution passes 19-0. Thank you. We're getting used to all this stuff here going forward. Like I said, we didn't have a dry run on this one at all. So moving forward, the Park and Forestry, the Wood County Park and Forestry Department's 2025 work plan begins on 123 and runs through 132. 123 through 132. Going to mention real quickly, I got Chad back there too, but we did get the final documentation signed on Sarah Park. And then we'll be operating as a county park beginning hopefully in May. More, you want to add? No?
Working hard.
Okay, thank you. That's a real feather in our cap to pick that up as a county park without having to pay for the infrastructure, basically. There are some improvements that need to be made, but thank you, Chad, for your work and the committee's work. Moving forward, the Property Information Technology Committee, their reading of January 6th on 133 and 134. And then we have the update from IT, begins on 135 and runs through 140. Our facilities manager, Ruben, go up to a microphone. We have the monthly letter of comments and then Ruben shared some things with me. He said, "You can share," and I said, "Might as well hear it directly from you." So might tell us a little bit about what's going on here with the Justice Center.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. So as you can see, we're making more progress. We are in the new county boardroom. There's still a lot of work happening behind the scenes and so the last couple of weeks have been working hard, the same as group RCM, on coordinating all the documentation needed for the city to file so that we can get our certificate of occupancy. Right now, that is what we are waiting on in order to move into the admin offices, the Sheriff's Department office space, but also to start using the entrance and to file requests with Department Corrections to come in and inspect our mail so that we can also move into yet. So just a lot of formalities. Enough work is completed. If we should have that certificate, I think within a few days here. Not sure if there's other specific questions about where we're at. There is, you know, a lot of work behind the scenes. Security electronics is massive. For anybody who walked through during construction, if you saw the amount of wiring that is in this building, it is wild. And all of that needs to be terminated and then easily programmed. And there are teams of people working on that the last few weeks and will continue until it's finished.
I don't know if anybody has any questions directly for you. I get asked about the community. Sheriff, do you want to add anything to that on occupancy, where you're at? Training, you all good to go?
Yeah, we're getting there. I talked to the captain Ashbeck. We're starting the training process for our corrections officers. So that should take about a month, you know, our target goal, occupying, but everything goes through what Ruben said. You know, hopefully by the end of February would be it all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Supervisor Roser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to pull up an email here. I've been in contact with the inmate Chaplin that serves the inmates here. And on Thursday at January the 30th at 10 o'clock, there's going to be a prayer walk through the jail. And Pastor Lonnie said that if people are unable to join that prayer walk that day, they would just maybe pray at home for that. But there will be an organized prayer walk at 10 o'clock and I think we're meeting, the group is meeting by the entrance to the courtroom and then there's going to be an organized walk through the jail before the inmates are transferred to the new facility. So if anybody's interested in joining that, it's at 10 o'clock on January the 30th. And I'm sure Pastor Lonnie would be glad to answer any further questions about that as well as Sheriff Becker. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Roser. Thank you, Ruben. The way you snuck away was pretty good. Thank you, Sheriff Becker. You know, we've tried to keep the public informed from day one when we broke ground here and I think we've done a really remarkable job of that, but as we near completion, I just want to make sure that we are constantly updating what's going on. And again, thank you very much for that. I'm also impressed with the amount of wire that gets pulled. Everybody else was looking at the pretty cabinets and desks and I was looking at the miles of cable and wire going, "Somebody's got to figure out where these all plug in," which is a monumental task. All right, moving forward, Marshfield Fairgrounds Commission meeting from November 21st on 142 and 143. The Central Wisconsin State Fair Directors Meeting of November 18th on 144, 145 and 146. South Central Library System Board Trustees, 147 and 148. And that brings us to a resolution that actually, I guess, came from me. I'm trying, they did, all right.
This will be Resolution 25-1-5, to approve the 2025 Wood County Emergency Fire Warden List. Fiscal note, none.
Hamilton and Zerflu? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? You want it on the board?
On the board.
On the board, okay. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman Allenstein?
Aye.
That resolution passes 19-0. The last item in business in our packet is a resolution relating to life in public service of Larry Brady. Some of us served with Larry way back when. You know, first, I only knew Larry from his time on the county board, you know, not from business in Marshfield and some of the other things he did. I don't know if there's anybody else who wants to share anything at this time. Supervisor Brady, Trent, I'd ask you to please read that resolution.
This will be Resolution 25-1-6, related to life in public service of Larry Brady.
I have a motion by Hamilton, a second by Roser. All in favor, please signify by aye. And I would ask this body to please rise and stand in silence for one minute in respect of his service and his behavior. Thank you. I'll just make a quick, Larry's one of those people who served on the board. He was quiet, but effective. Not somebody you'd have heard very often, but he was one of those people who would call occasionally, ask a question and I think did his research on those issues that came before us. And it's sad, it seems like we've lost a lot of former supervisors in the last year, year and a half, so. I got nothing further, do nothing on my desk, but then next meeting, you guys have some stuff to share, Trent?
Well, if you're a little hungry, there is a little party down in room 114 for our outgoing Finance Director, starting at 10:30. No, that's not Pena, that's Ed that's leaving. So please stop down there after this meeting.
So did I have to drag this out a bit more than that?
No.
All right, our next meeting is Tuesday, February 18th, in this room. As you heard, we're going to be transitioning everything over here pretty shortly. For those of you who are going to Madison, we have a captain team meeting, WCA, on Thursday at the Park Hotel, just up the square or on the square down in Madison. Hope to see some of you there. Nothing else to come for the board? I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.